Go back to Firefox and then do it that way.
You should be able to type on with Edge.
Really?
I think what the...
Hmm.
Where is Firefox now? Can I say anything?
Okay, it looks like we're live. Commissioners, hold on just one second, please.
Where we're on now?
I believe you. Just gotta make sure that I can type in the chat box. Okay, I'm working. Brian, thank you.
I'm late.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. You're gonna hyperventilate.
I tell ya.
Are we live?
We are live, yes.
Okay. Folks, we are live. Kaylee, I see you're with us, so we should be able to take care of everything through the regular protocol for your stuff with scale and whatnot. We'll call the meeting to order at 11:01 a.m. And we've got Michael Majerik doing the invocation. You're welcome to join that, and then Administrator Desette will do the pledge. Michael, you're on.
Yep. You all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Board, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Please watch over our citizens living with illness today. God bless America, Barion County, and our families. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Elliot.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Meeks. Meeks.
Ah, he is not back on yet.
I'll come back to him. Majerik.
Here.
Larrick.
Present.
Yarborough.
Present.
Hinkleman.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Hugo.
Here.
Chickering.
Here.
Freeling.
Here.
Meeks. Not yet. Mr. Chair, you have an 11 present.
Thank you. Hopefully Don will reconnect shortly.
I keep watching.
Before we move into the body of the agenda, Sheriff Bailey?
Yes, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of Joe Zangaro and Ron Kinzel, who lives were lost on July 11th, 1916, at the Barion County Courthouse.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We have minutes from two weeks ago. The clerk sent them out via email. Any changes to those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes. This is Michael Majerik.
Moved by Majerik.
Supported by Mr. Hugo.
Supported by Hugo. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yarborough.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman. Hinkleman? Is Hinkleman up there?
We keep losing people.
Hinkleman?
Yeah, he's there.
He's muted. I just, I just...
Scott?
Yes.
Chickering.
Yes.
Larrick.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Hugo.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Are you there? He's not yet. But he's trying to call on us if we can see him.
Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have an 11, yes.
Okay. Any communications?
Yes, you should have received three. One from M. Smith, Office of Economic Development, Michigan Department of Transportation, an email on the grant summary for Barion County Road Department on Marquette Greenway Phase 1 and 2, received on June 30. Tuscola County Board of Commissioners, a resolution supporting the Inbridge proposed tunnel replacement project, received on July 1st. Malon McMichael Nile City, an email regarding his neighborhood, received on July 6, 2020. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. We'll pause for public comment regarding resolutions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Scott. I'd like to make a comment, if so, at this point, on the communications that were received by the county clerk. One of the communications in there was for a TAP grant for the Marquette Greenway down here in New Buffalo, Michigan, M.DOT through the Road Department. There's been a update on that that the board needs to know about. Previously, the township board had approved the three-lane study on US 12. There have been a lot of problems, and yesterday, the township board had a special meeting at 2:00 in the afternoon, and they voted four to one to tell the state of Michigan, M.DOT, that they are no longer in support of a three-lane and to move it back to four lanes. If they do, and M.DOT does grant that request to the township, then that would go back to four lanes. At that point in time, there is no room for the Marquette Greenway path to go through because they needed that to be three-lane in order for that to work. So I would say that all of that needs to be put on hold and set aside because my understanding is a TAP grant was case-specific to the Marquette Greenway, and we cannot apply for a grant and then use that money elsewhere. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention on what happened yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you said "they," what community meant to ask?
On New Buffalo Township.
Thank you.
The three-lane road from the state line up to the city limits in New Buffalo is all in the township. And they approved it at first, but it's been a debacle. There's... They're afraid somebody's gonna get killed on this, on this section of road because of a lot of reasons. And they've decided that they don't want to be part of that anymore, so that's why they said that. That's why they voted a new resolution yesterday.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need to do anything?
I don't know. I don't know, but I spoke a little bit about this yesterday with Brian in anticipation of this. But if you happen to look at the TAP grant requirements from M.DOT for the Barion County Road Department, it is required that in order to apply for this grant for the Marquette Greenway, for that bicycle path, basically, that the county does need to pass a... The county board does need to pass a resolution and then have the money available because it is a code-share grant, even though it says some of that money is gonna be paid for by the Pokagan Fund and the townships and the Friends of the Harbor Country Trails and things like that. But if there is no place to put this now, because once it does go back to four lane, there is not the area to put it, and Amtrak will not give them an easement to put it along the Amtrak railroad track. So I just wanted us to be aware. I think we're just gonna have to sit on this and do nothing. But I wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I...
Members of the board, later today, I'll be connecting with the New Buffalo Township Supervisor, just getting the latest information from her on what the board has done. We have received notice from M.DOT of a tentative grant approval. At this moment, this board does not need to take any formal action. At some point in the future, this board will be asked to consider some type of authorizing resolution to accept the terms of that grant agreement. Between myself and the Road Department, we will be doing some legwork to figure out exactly where the locals stand in New Buffalo Township, in New Buffalo City, before advancing this project. Commissioner Scott did make me aware of that special meeting, and I was able to get a note out to the township supervisor, and we are tentatively scheduled to connect over a phone call after today's meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Before we get into the resolutions, we'll pause for public comment. Comment limited to resolutions on the agenda, including the added resolution.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any resolutions regarding this, what we're talking about with the Greenway?
No, ma'am.
Okay, because I read through things, but I don't know quite what I remember. Thank you.
Yep. It hadn't reached the point where we would have been taking action by resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
I've asked a couple of times. We have about 10 people watching right now, and I've asked a couple of times for comments regarding the resolutions, and it appears as though we don't have any for that specific purpose.
All right. Looking at the resolutions, I was asked by Commissioner Scott by voice message last night to pull 7290, which is the added resolution. Does anyone else want anything pulled from the consent calendar for individual action?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Commissioner Freeling. I don't know if we need to pull the resolution for the requisition, but I had communicated with a... But I am going to be abstaining from two of the items on that resolution.
Okay.
It's gonna be item 44363 for the amount of $5,837.50.
I see it.
For $8,000 for rev excavation.
Did you get that?
I'll get it from there.
Okay, that will be reflected in the meeting minutes.
Thank you.
I have... I have... Is this the payment of bills? Is that what you're on, Chairman?
The requisitions, the monthly requisitions.
Were you done? Commissioner Freeling, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yes, I'm done, and it was for the requisition resolution.
Okay, and I have a abstention also. Let me find it. It's on a Kalen bill.
Okay.
It's... The amount is $58,454 on the bills, Barion County Road Department. The total bill is $270,795. That's the one. I would like to abstain because my son wants for Kalen construction.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. With those two caveats, are we good to go ahead with the consent calendar, accepting out resolution lands in 7290?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as you explained it.
Thank you. Is there support? Was that Commissioner Freeling?
Yes, sir.
Supported, okay. All right, moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yarborough.
Abstain.
What?
Yes. Correct.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Chickering.
Yes.
Larrick.
I believe so. Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Hugo. Hugo?
I think I heard a voice.
Majerik.
Yes.
Hugo, yes, and I said yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12, yes.
Thank you. Now, the resolution ending in 7290, the contract with, I don't know if it's Kazoo LLC or Kay Kazoo LLC, for illness tracking services. Ezra?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to say that I am totally against this resolution. And secondly, I did not receive the contract in any of my emails, so I have no idea what the contract is, so I could not vote on approving a contract that I haven't read or seen. That's number one. Number two is, what I don't understand is this resolution says the contract period would be June 1, 2020, through August 31, 2020, for a cost $65 an hour, not to exceed a total cost of $7,670 during that time period. My question to you is, has this company been doing business, doing this basic contact tracing, without our approval since June 1 of 2020? Because here we are in July. And I have to ask that, and some other basic information is, under the Be Safe, or BackToWorkSafe.com, the link goes to the Barion County Health Department, and the BackToWorkSafe flyer was posted by the Health Department as of 6/26/2020, which was a day after our last meeting. I don't understand why we're doing this and why all of this is being done, and we haven't approved anything yet. That's another question I have. I am not in favor of contract tracing due to the fact that I think it violates the people's Fourth Amendment rights to privacy. The other issue that I have with this resolution and this contract, which I haven't read, is if the contract has been vetted, basically, by our corporate counsel, I would believe that our corporate counsel is vetting this contract based on form, not on applicability. And if the form of the contract is correct, then the corporate counsel is probably approving what's in the contract. Of course, I don't have it, so I can't see. The other issue that I'd like to get into here on this is I think it sets a bad precedent, Mr. Chair, that the county of Barion, the Board of County Commissioners, which is a political end of the county, is getting involved with private entities, private businesses, reporting on employees that they have. I don't think the county needs to be in that position. Because number one is, where is this data being stored at? Is Kay Kazoo storing this data, and what are they doing with this data? If this is something that is just data for the Health Department, why does the Health Department need to have an outside company come in to gather this data? What we're saying is, is we don't have the staff, or we don't have the resources or the knowledge to collect this data on our own. I'm really kind of worried about some of this data coming out of employers who may have problems with employees that want to possibly get rid of them. I don't know. We don't know any of this. None of this has been explained to us. And I just think it's gonna be a bad situation for this county board to get involved in private enterprise. And the private enterprise should have a way of reporting individuals who are sick or whatever to the Health Department. They don't really need the county board to get involved in this. And that's why I... These are some of the issues and the problems that I have. Thank you for listening.
Before I ask the administrator or public health officer for their perspectives, any other board members have any questions or comments?
I am just interested in what our county administrator and the Health Department have to say about it. I too have got some, I guess, some reservations about the need for the tracing. So I'm anxious to hear what is to be said by the Health Department and our county administrator, what support they would have for this. Why is this indicative, or why is this necessary? So please, I'm looking forward to the explanation.
All right, Brian?
Yeah, so, members of the board, this was brought to my attention last Wednesday. To circle around to the individual questions, Corporate Counsel has reviewed the contract document as well as the resolution and the overall situation. We have worked with Corporate Counsel to massage the contract docs so that it's in a format that is acceptable to the county's attorney. Following up on the additional questions, did this violate the overall county policy? Yeah, we absolutely, as your staff have erred in bringing this forward. We are being asked... We are asking the board to consider approval essentially on a retro basis. As it became apparent that this was ordered on a verbal by a member of staff without the proper procedures being followed, I've worked with the director to ensure that proper disciplinary steps have been taken. And I can tell this board that I've got complete confidence that the director has worked with the staff member to ensure that this misstep does not occur again. Additionally, I've worked with the Health Department Director to understand that the contact tracing software was presented to her board. It did receive the blessing of the board. A copy of the full contract has been shared with the committee. I'll work with Annette to get a copy of the contract out to the full Board of Commissioners. As it relates to where the data is stored and the benefit of the overall software, I'm gonna defer to the director on those two items. But what I wanted to say to this board is, did we make a mistake? Absolutely. Are we taking steps to ensure that that mistake does not occur again? Absolutely. I have complete confidence that, between myself and the director, this isn't going to occur again. And those were my notes on the immediate questions. We do have the director on the line, and I was hoping, Mr. Chair, to have her speak to the data collection, where that data is stored, and then the overall benefit of the software.
All right. Nikki?
Yes, thank you. So I want to start by saying that there are a couple of different concepts that are being confused here, and so I want to make sure that we have that clarity, and I apologize for that. So the proposed product here that's being considered with this contract does not have to do with contact tracing. Contact tracing is a very individualized procedure of talking, identifying, and talking to, and taking proper precautions with an individual who has been exposed to a COVID case. That is a separate process that my staff has been doing and continue to do throughout the course of this pandemic, and that is something separate. What the proposed software will do will actually provide a mechanism for employers who choose to, to do two things. One, there are currently executive orders that mandate that any employer that has a employee that they are aware of that is a confirmed COVID case, they must notify the local Health Department within the jurisdiction that they are. We have lots of people that work in Barion County but live in other counties, and so per the executive order and with good public health practice, those businesses are required to notify the Health Department that they have a confirmed COVID case. That mechanism, we have multiple ways in which that can happen, via phone call, via email. We have those out there. This online reporting system would be another venue for that to happen. However, if it did happen through the online venue, it would not have individual information. This platform would not ask for any individualized information. There would be no protected health information, no identifiers, nothing would happen on this reporting platform. What this reporting platform allows businesses to do, it allows them to have a tool, not just businesses, any workplace. It provides them with a tool to be able to enter in how many sick employees they have on a given day. And they could do it by week if they so choose, however they want to do it. There are some options. But they would just say, so if I was doing it on behalf of the Barion County Health Department, I would put into the system, we had two employees ill today with symptoms consistent with COVID. So the businesses, over time, would be able to see what had been some of the illness trends in their employees, if they have multiple work sites or locations. They have that capability. It presents it in a really nice dashboard and report for those employers who wish to have that type of monitoring in place. For the employees that are participating, we would also, as the Health Department, have that data available as another source of surveillance data. We know that testing for COVID-19 is not meeting the full demand and need. We know that test results right now from a lot of providers that are doing testing in our community, it's taking close to seven days to get results. And so that means there's a lag in knowing exactly how things might be shifting in the community. Having access to data about where people might be if they have COVID-like symptoms just gives us another brush stroke as we're painting this bigger picture of what is going on with disease transmission in Barion County. By asking about symptomatic individuals and by having it be on a volunteer basis, it is not perfect public health data. We would not intend for it to be perfect public health data, but it does give that broader brush stroke. Again, it's all voluntary. There's no individual information. It has value to the business, and it allows us, as your Health Department, to better serve the community. We might be able to identify some hotspots, some pockets within the county where we're likely to see this transmission start to increase. If we do start to see those increases, it would give us a few days' time, a few days' extra time to respond with interventions and perhaps extra monitoring to know what is going on there.
Thank you. Questions for Nikki?
Nikki, this is Commissioner Scott. I have a question. I was forwarded some dashboard, not dashboard information, but some EOC information this morning from Annette. And please, please correct me if I'm wrong. I was under the understanding when this whole COVID issue started, we were worried about the deaths. And of course, we're always worried about the deaths, okay? I guess I have an issue because this contract period would be June 1 through August 31. But if you look at this dashboard data that came out of the But if you look at this dashboard da, data that came out of the EOC, our last death was on June 15th of 2020. And as of, uh, today, or as of yesterday, we're still at 60. So whatever we're doing, we're doing right. So I guess, why do we need this particular software program now? Should we not have something had something similar to this when this all first started? So if we want to see what the trends are, we can. I, I don't understand why all of a sudden we have to have this now. And this is only through August? What happens on, uh, September 1st? Is this a re, contract? Cause I have yet to see the contract, so.
So the contract is for the development services. This is, um, it's for the developer to create the product. And to Brian's point and what he mentioned, a lot of the work based on an error made in my department, um, by a staff member, a lot of the work has already been done. Not all of it, but a lot of it has been done. So that contract period is actually for development. Going through August 31st, there might be some tweaks in functionality of that product. But that, we, we retain the use of that product. It is not cut off after September 1st. Um, it, it would be something that we would continue going. It's for the purchase, the development and the purchase of this online, um, platform.
Very, thank you.
Mac, can I?
Chair, this is Commissioner.
Pardon me? Does someone have a question?
I see John, John.
John?
I just wanted to, I just make careful comment after listening to both the administrator and the, um, and Nikki. I, as an employer, uh, somebody who employs a fair number of people in county, I'm not sure that I see the benefit here. I feel a great deal of respect and, and, um, we, we work with our people very closely here to monitor their health, especially in these days at the workplace, you know, for the sake of the workplace and for the sake of the worker. And, um, inasmuch, we are, um, you know, reporting, you know, whatever is necessary to report if anyone is ill, we, uh, we make sure that they get the proper attention that they need. And so, uh, whatever data is accumulated as people go to the healthcare centers that they go to from, from the workplace, um, I, to, to me, the work is being done and I don't see the additional value in what is being asked for, uh, to accumulate this, to try to find that hotspot. So from an employer standpoint, somebody who is, who's, who's in the trenches every day, I'm not sure that I see the, the need for this type of data accumulation and to pay for it additionally. So, but that's, uh, that's my comment because we are, we're currently doing that as employers. We're already doing that in the community. We're providing safe workplace, making sure that we provide that safe workplace if anyone shows any kind of ill symptoms at this point in time. And, um, and making sure that they get to the, uh, to a healthcare, um, arena so that they can get it taken care of well.
And I'm very glad to hear that, that you are doing those things as an employer. I'm sure employee workplaces across our county are doing all of those right things. This is just another attempt to be able to have some good, um, surveillance data. It's hard to make good public health decisions in the absence of, of data.
Any other comments? Yes, yes ma'am.
This is Commissioner Freeling. I had a question just on process. I know that corporate counsel has had an opportunity to review this. Have we discussed with our IT department with regards to the requirements for data storage? I know I did have the opportunity to review the contract and, um, my understanding is that the data is going to be stored on this, uh, contractor servers. So I just want to make certain that we are, um, within those guidelines that we need to adhere to for information.
Yes, it is my understanding that, that we are. And this is, this is a web-based service, so the, the county is not hosting any of it. We have a, a backend login to the system, whereas, um, employers who opt in would have another login to the system and it is hosted by the third party.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As long as the subject was brought up, I guess I'd like to ask for a clarification. I think because we're doing this via Zoom, we don't have the opportunities that we normally have. That is when, uh, any of our committees receive a resolution. There is a stamp on there where it's been reviewed by corporate counsel and the county administrator. They review it, they sign off on it. I've heard a couple of different times now, corporate counsel only reviews those contracts for format. Now, i- is that, first off, is that true? And then who reviews it for content? Is that where the county administrator actually looks at the nuts and bolts? The information verifies it with the department head and then moves it forward to the committee? I just want a clarification on that if I could.
Well, first of all, it's not just a format review by corporate counsel. It's, it's substantive review and that's also done by the administrator. And I'll kick it over to Brian to amplify on that.
Yeah, so members of the board, I've reviewed the, um, the, the resolution as well as the contract agreement. I've also reviewed the, the staff memo that summarizes the situation. I've signed off on the, the resolution that's before you along with corporate counsel. And, um, corporate counsel is also reviewing the contract, the resolution, and was provided the, the background staff, staff report.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation because I kept hearing the, the corporate counsel only reviews the form. They, they do more than the format. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
One more, one more, Mr. Chair. The, the, um, is the data, is the data not available to the health department? When, say that I send an employee down to, um, to a healthcare destination, all right? And it's the emergency room, it's intercare, it's wherever, wherever that person is most comfortable with. And I send them down there with symptoms. The information that comes in as far as whether they have COVID, whether they have, is that information currently not available to the health department?
No, it's not available. So we receive information based on reportable diseases. COVID-19 is a reportable disease as is a negative COVID test. Um, for individuals that might be symptomatic and do not receive a test, there is no mechanism for the health department knowing that information, which is why we are seeking additional ways to, to try to have a little bit of insight as to what might be happening in the community. We know there are mild infections that do not necessarily rise to the level of seeking healthcare or that people might not want to have a test for a variety of reasons. And so having that type of symptomatic surveillance, not necessarily knowing any of the people, but having an understanding of where the burden of illness might be, these are tactics we use for influenza on a yearly basis. We have a very similar system that we use on that schools report, just number of ill students on a weekly basis. This would be, provide us a similar type of surveillance data. Again, not able to be traced to any individuals, but no, we're, we do not get all of that information, if somebody is just sick.
So, so it seems just a little problematic to me because is there an assumption then that's being made? Nikki, that, that, that as this data is collected, you're saying that there are people that are symptomatic, they're sick, with, nobody knows what, what illness they have. And this is what you're trying to trace? The fact that there, there are people there that, that feel poorly in the workplace, that, that, that they're just sick? Is that, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
We're, we're looking to identify people who have respiratory virus symptoms. So whether we, if they're not tested, we can't know what the source of that is. But as we do with influenza-type surveillance, trying to identify in the, in the communities and throughout the county, you know, is there a certain area where we're seeing what appears to be more transmission of respiratory illnesses? This is another tool to be able to do that. So yes, looking at somebody who might be symptomatic, as I said, there's delays in testing. There are issues with access to testing that continue. So having that symptomatic data gives us a few days' head start on identifying a potential hotspot, identifying potential changes in trends. And that is why we are seeking misinformation.
Okay, thank you.
Nikki, this is Commissioner Scott. I have a couple of follow-ups.
Let me stop you for, just let me pause you for one moment. Haley has been, uh, with us. And then we went through the consent calendar, which approved all of the resolutions that she needed. Haley, I appreciate your patience in staying with us. Was there anything more that you needed? If not, you don't need to hang with us unless you are enjoying this so much you want to just stay with it for the duration of the meeting.
No, I was really just here to answer any questions that you might have. So, um, the grants are, are very similar.
I think we're good. And with that, if you want to exit, we'll, we'll wish you a good rest of the day.
Okay, thank you. Let me know if you have any, any questions at all.
All right, very good. Thanks. Okay, Ezra?
Yeah, Nikki, um, a couple of things. I'm, I'm, this is a tracing, uh, software. And, um, I, I, I think, I think I would choose different words. You can choose your own words, but I, I would definitely get away from the surveillance word. Um, I think that that's a wrong choice of words, but that's just me. The other issue that I have here is I'm not very comfortable at all with having an outside firm having any type of information or database on Bering County. Now, if we were buying software from this company and we were hosting it and filling it out, which I think that the health department would probably be able to do, if they could get all of the data from the hospitals and the, and, and whatever, I would be much more comfortable with that than having an outside company having our data, um, whatever that data is. And we don't know what this outside company then is allowed to do with that data. That being said, uh, I will preface this with a situation that John was talking about and you were talking about, about not getting data. I had surgery, uh, a week ago. Three days before my surgery at Francesca and Hospital, I had elbow surgery, uh, I had to go for a COVID test. And I got the COVID test on, on a Saturday at eight o'clock in the morning. I had my surgery on Tuesday. My test came back negative. No detection. So you can't get that data. You don't know about it. You know about it now because I'm telling you, but you can't get that data from the hospitals. And, and I guess, why would that be? They are not allowed to give you that data because of HIPAA, correct?
No, we do get that data. We have reports of all negative tests. Negative tests don't get reported across state lines. So the example you gave, we would not. But negative ones that are happening, for example, in Spectrum Health Lakeland or other healthcare settings in the state of Michigan, a negative COVID test is reportable.
Okay, so going with that, what you're saying this company does is employers then can call in and say, or, or access this dashboard or wherever it is, that they can say, you know, I've got a person who has a cold. And then that becomes a reportable piece of data. Just because they have sniffles or cough or sinus problems, that is misinformed data if it's being used as COVID-19 data. That's what I don't understand. How is this all separated out? Because if somebody has a headache or, or somebody has a fever or something like that, it is not necessarily COVID. It could be other things. Uh, it could be a precursor to a heart condition or, or cancer or, or something like that. So how are the, how is this program going to help at all with anything is what I want to know?
So these are great questions and I would love to be able to spend more time with the board to help understand epidemiological data, how we monitor, um, health and wellness and disease trends in populations. Um, I know we don't have the time to do that really deep dive on this right now. Your, your points about how symptomatic data is lower quality data is absolutely true. It's not perfect. But what we're constantly trying to assess and in public health, it is our job to monitor the health status of the population. I am very concerned about all 155,000 people that live in Bering County and not necessarily individually by name, but to understand the trends in the illness. So when we have this broader data, I know you don't like the term surveillance. I'm using the term surveillance because it is the technical term for, i- in the field of epidemiology and in public health. So, and mindful that has a connotation to it. So I appreciate that comment. But with that, um, data, we can't look at a population's health without doing many different things. So the analogy with a healthcare provider, if the patient is one person, you're not going to take somebody's blood pressure and now say, I know everything about your health. You're going to take a temperature, you're going to do a blood pressure. You might do a cholesterol test, you're going to do a blood sugar test, the A1C. You might have to do some x-rays. Depending on what it is, there's a whole battery of how do we get these different tests? And each piece of new information by itself may not be significant, but when taken all together, you can get a really good picture. In public health, our quote patient is the 155,000 people in Bering County. So we're working to have as much information as we can on our, our quote patient, on the whole population. And being able to identify trends within that, because we know the experience of every population, every geographical area, every demographic, their experience is not the same. There are inherent differences in how the virus, um, responds based on underlying conditions, based on age. There's other social vulnerabilities. There's lots of reasons why different pockets within that 150,000 people, 55,000 people might be different. So to be a really good quality health department, to try to stay on top of this, because while you're right, we have not had death, a death in three weeks and I am so grateful for that. And our hospitalization numbers for the most part have been very low, um, over the last month or so. This is not over for us and I don't know exactly when it's going to tick up. We're starting to see some slight increases in the numbers. I'm not very alarmed yet, but I also know come fall, we're probably going to see an uptick. I don't know how high it's going to go. I hope and pray and am trying to proactively make sure we don't reach crisis standards of care in our healthcare system. But part of this is we have to understand what the picture is in getting more pieces of data. Is this one individual piece of data from voluntary employer reporting the highest quality stuff? Are we going to bank everything on this? Absolutely not. But as we can continue to have that better picture, we can make better decisions to protect the health of the residents. That's what I'm looking to do. And I agree, I would love it if we had the internal capacity to do this. But quite frankly, I don't have enough staff members. We do not have enough capacity. I don't even have a person that I can assign to who's dealing with all of the questions from workplaces as to what we do. That's scattershot how we're having to do it because we are really piecing together this. This is a really big response. We're maintaining a lot of what we're doing with our health department services to maintain other and prevent other public health issues from flailing, from raising up. I'm really happy to do that. Having this online reporting system that makes the collection of that data easier for everybody is a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Well, I, I want to, on the one hand, make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard. I also am mindful that, uh, if somebody told me Nikki's been a little under the weather and I don't want to tax you physically, Nikki, with, with too much additional dialogue if you're not feeling well. So if anyone has anything else, uh, any other questions or concerns to air out, then we should hear those. If not, it would be appropriate to call the question. Is there a motion to approve?
Commissioner Harrison, I need approval of the.
Commissioner Harrison, I need approval of the contract, the resolution P two zero zero seven two nine zero.
Moved by Harrison. Is there support?
Support.
Hugo?
Yep.
Supported by Hugo. Any further discussion?
Chair, this is Commissioner Scott. I'm disturbed by this, that we have commissioners ready to vote on something when we're voting on a resolution and have not read the contract. I know our administrator has, and and I and I appreciate that. But without full information, I don't know how this can possibly go forward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Was this not approved?
I appreciate it. Dave Vorrat, did you have something?
Was this not approved through PHS committee?
I believe so.
Okay.
And was reviewed and and approved by the administrator and corporate counsel. And as as you know, corporate counsel is thorough. I would also note that we have several documents that are tied to resolutions that were on the consent calendar. Those documents are in different forms. Some are grant applications, Mental Health Court, Drug Treatment Court, SWIFT and Sure, SWIMBA. All of those have contractual underpinnings. None of those documents typically are scrutinized by individual board members because we have folks that we pay to do those things. Now, that doesn't mean that in a given situation, we would be precluded from that review. We certainly can do it. But generally, usually, standard operating procedure is to have that done by staff. So I I appreciate the concern. I also appreciate the explanation that's been provided about how this grew legs and got running on its own without going through the procedures that we have. And I appreciate that that has been handled. People make mistakes occasionally. That happens. This was a good faith error. And it's been dealt with. And Nikki has handled that work with Brian and Shelley. And I I believe the Chair of PHS also was in the loop on that. So I don't profess to know all of the ins and outs involved here in terms of public health, public safety. But I do appreciate the work that's being done out on Napier Avenue. So Nikki, the resolution says it's not to exceed $7,670. Do you have any idea, as we were talking this morning, how much of that money has been committed?
I do believe it's about $7,000 already. And again, I apologize for that error in in process and that that did not get the approval before the vendor was given the verbal.
That that happens. So are these some of the COVID dollars that you received from Lansing a while ago?
Yes, all of it would be coming from funding we've received from NDHHS directly for COVID-19 response.
How's that funding lasting? How much do you have left?
It's been a little bit since I've seen the latest report, but we have received some verbal notification that there's one, there is another allocation coming. We're still awaiting on dollar amounts, but we expect it to be fairly substantial.
Okay, the check's in the mail, so to speak.
Matt, can I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
Um, I did. I did see a concern by a commissioner about this KKZO company, and they can't find any information on them. You can easily Google them. They have many, many dozens and dozens, probably hundreds of companies that they deal with in Bering County and all the way to Kalamazoo. Very big companies, schools they use, and they're easy to find if you want to look them up.
All right. Well, Nikki, keep us posted on how this is going, if you would, and particularly if we need to take a look at extending it out. And if you'll stay with us, we need to talk about the declaration of emergency that by its current terms will sunset at the end of the day tomorrow. But I think we're ready for a roll call vote if there aren't any other comments or questions about seven two nine zero. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yarborough.
Yes.
Chair, could we have the resolution? What was the what was the motion? What was the motion, please?
To approve seven two nine zero.
Thank you.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
No.
Scott.
No.
Chickering.
Yes.
Vorrat.
Yes.
Freeling.
No.
Curran.
Yes.
Hugo. Hugo.
Chris, are you there?
Chris?
He's muted.
Yes, yes.
There we go. That that's yes?
He voted twice.
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nine yays, three nays.
Okay, thank you. I'm advised Nikki has to to go to something else in three minutes. So Nikki, let's talk about that now. Chair, with the board, your thoughts on letting the current declaration of emergency sunset at the end of the day tomorrow?
Yes, so as we mentioned in the earlier discussion, that the trends in COVID cases and hospitalizations and deaths has been pretty good over the last couple of weeks. The amount of effort and type of coordination and the in the way the response is going, I do feel comfortable letting the declaration sunset. I don't believe that that would have any impact on our current response. The the one thing I would just continue to remind is that this is a really fluid situation. I see this, our response is going to be kind of a dial that we continue to take back and forth. Right now, we seem to be in a little bit of a slower period. We numbers are starting to creep up very slowly, but I'm not reading into that just yet. But I would ask that the board be prepared that in the coming weeks or months, we may reach a point where a declaration of a local emergency may become relevant again.
For the benefit of the board, we had our weekly EOC telecommunication meeting at 2:30 yesterday afternoon. And the the consensus of the group was that that we should go ahead and sunset this. Sergeant Bush talked with United Way, because you know, there's a fair number of volunteers coming through there. They were comfortable with it. Annette forwarded to you information from Sergeant Bush this morning from the dashboard, I believe from the state's dashboard. So we are going to continue the weekly meetings, even if we have the Emergency Operations Center stand down. And added to that group for those weekly meetings will be Nikki Britton. And if the Chair of PHS, Mr. Chickering, can also join us, that would be good. It would be Zoom. But that way, we can keep the group together. It would be the EOC permanent members, Bob Harrison, Dave Vorrat, Jim Curran, Rocky Adams, Captain Adams, typically the Sheriff or Chuck Height, the Administrator. And then if Commissioner Yarborough is also available to join, that would cover all of the committees. And then Ezra, you would be my alternate.
Yes.
So that hopefully will give us some greater agility as we're working our way through the weeks ahead. And if something happens, I would be able to put it back in for seven days if we had to to make a new declaration. And then the full board would need to weigh in after a week if we were going to continue it. But having Nikki involved as the Public Health Officer will give us briefings weekly and keep us up to speed on on what's going on. So so Nikki, you're you're going to have a little bit of a homework assignment because you'll be filling us all in every Wednesday at 2:30 if you can.
Glad to.
Matt, Commissioner Scott, I was writing some things down here. You said that about the when is that going to be the the debriefing end?
It's every week at 2:30 on Zoom. And that would start this next week. Yesterday would be our last weekly executive briefing before the sunset of the current declaration of emergency, which is 11:59 PM, I guess, and 59 seconds tomorrow. So after after that, the declaration is is expiring by its terms.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And I think Nikki had to break away. So with that, I'm I'm making that appointment of that committee today. And it will meet Wednesday at 2:30 via Zoom. Captain Adams has become pretty good at setting all that stuff up, so he will continue to do so. And but if you look at the information that Annette sent out this morning, even with the slight uptick in cases, it does seem appropriate to let the declaration of emergency expire tomorrow, at the end of the day tomorrow. Any? Yes, sir.
With the expiration of the declaration, the emergency declaration, at that time deactivate the EOC. Is the EOC deactivated at that same time?
The declaration of emergency does not per se deactivate EOC. That would take further board action, which we could do now or we could do next week. But, you know, when we ramped up the EOC back in, was it in April or late March? I can't. I think it was in March because I remember driving in sometime in March to sign it. That was the second step in the process. We had done a preliminary activation, and then it was requested that we do the declaration, so I drove up to sign it. At this point, we're letting the the emergency status stand down as of the end of the day tomorrow. But it would also take action of the full board to to formally deactivate the EOC. Because that's my understanding of the statute. I confess I haven't read it in about 10 or 15 years, but that's my recollection.
Okay, is it our intention to deactivate the EOC then?
What's the pleasure of the board? I mean, you can leave it activated, but have it on standby, or you can deactivate it, and then if we need to, we can reactivate it. Sheriff's sitting here, too. I'd like to know your thoughts, Sheriff.
Well, we're running it with our just our staff anyway, so there's no reason to keep moving forward. Captain Adams and Sergeant Bush and Dave Vorat are the only three people we have over there along with our administrative assistant, Gail Bassett. We pulled back all the people doing the inventory and everything, and they're handling it themselves.
Do you want to keep it activated but have it idling, so to speak?
I think we could deactivate it if that's and reactivate it if the tick goes back up, just like we do with this the the emergency.
All right. Jim, what do you think?
Well, that's why I asked the question, because while as long as it's activated, we still have the JIC in place, and you still committed four commissioners. And, you know, things are going right now, and with the data, it seems to me like we should be able to deactivate the EOC. And just like with the declaration, if things take a bad turn on us, we can always reactivate it and and reinstitute the declaration. So I would be in favor of activating the EOC because that would relieve four of us commissioners not to have to have that up.
Dave and then Bob, what are your thoughts?
I agree with Jim completely. I don't see any reason not to deactivate.
What about the rest of the group? Anybody have any?
Yeah, let me let me ask. May I?
Yes, ma'am.
May May me Yarborough. I get a call each week. I don't know if it's for the Wednesday meeting or the Friday one. It says this is emergency something, I guess, and it's just to remind, kind of a reminder that you meet at 2:30. Is that a Wednesday meeting or is that the Friday one?
It will be Wednesday at 2:30, each Wednesday.
And and that's what I want to be clear on.
One thing about is Friday. Yeah, the Friday meeting originally was the municipal meeting. And then here in the last two, three weeks, it's been combined. But the Friday municipal meeting is not going to continue.
Okay, see, that's what I want to understand. What? Two, there were two meetings. There was a Wednesday and a Friday, and then there was one.
We had a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We're down to just Wednesday now.
So what you're talking about closing down is the Wednesday one that you just appointed us to? Or go over that again. Explain it.
As of next week, it would just be the Wednesday at 2:30.
Yes.
We wouldn't be doing Thursday or Friday anymore.
Okay.
And and it would be that group. And if somebody knows they're not going to be available and they want to designate someone else from their board committee to come in, we can certainly arrange that.
Okay.
Come in electronically, I mean.
Right. So otherwise, expect that this coming Wednesday, the Committee on Committees will be at the Zoom meeting.
No.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's not technically Committee on Committees. It's it's the we're going to call it, I guess we didn't come up with a name yesterday, but we'll we'll call it the 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 COVID Coordinating Committee. That sounds good. Three Cs.
And are there more people on it than just the commissioners you named?
Sheriff, the Administrator,
Okay.
Nikki, the Public Health Officer, Nikki Britton.
Okay.
Captain Adams, under Sheriff Height. So, yeah, that would be the group. That'd be about 10 or so people altogether, I guess.
Okay, all right. I just want to understand it because it was getting shaky for me. When you say you're going to close it down, then why are we appointed? But no. Okay.
Well, and the the main thrust of those weekly briefings is going to be to get information from Nikki.
Okay.
Plus, know how things are going, if she has some some challenges that she's facing, needs some help. Gives us an earlier view, an earlier heads up. And then, of course, we can have her continue briefings to the full board as as appropriate.
Okay.
So but the the working committee, the this smaller group has has been a good thing over the last four months. And when you go back to March, there was a time when we were meeting every day.
Okay.
And thankfully, we're not needing to do that now.
Okay.
But But does anybody else have any thoughts on deactivating the EOC?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Scott. I'd like to make a motion to deactivate the EOC, to deactivate it, and also to allow the declaration to sunset.
Okay. Both of those would be effective at 12:01 AM on Saturday, the 11th of July, correct?
If you say that's the date and time, then that's the date and time. But good, thank you.
Okay. Is there support for that motion?
I would like to support that motion. This is Commissioner Curran.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Curran. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Yarborough.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Henkelman.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Chickering.
Yes.
Borat.
Affirmative.
Freely.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Hugo.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 yeas.
Thank you. Bill, did you want to talk about pension refund rollover approval from First Down Human Services Committee?
Sure. On a monthly basis, jelly refunds that have been submitted, they're put together in a form for us. We are normally, Annette has circulated those to us. I believe Terry and Dave agree with me that they are appropriate, they should be approved and implemented.
Aye, aye.
So I'd move that.
I'll second.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Sorry. We were muted here. Dave said he's in support. Terry, what say you?
Yes, I affirm that everything was good and we should move it forward.
All right.
It only requires PHS.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. I thought so. All right, so PHS is approving the monthly.
Let me call, bro. Do we have Borat making it, by Freely, or did Chickering make it?
Bill made the motion.
Okay.
Dave supported, so the roll call of PHS.
Chickering.
Yes.
Freely.
Yes.
Borat.
Yes.
Three nays.
Okay, so pension refund rollover approval is done. Any commissioner reports? Okay, is the Administrator having anything to share?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I will be brief. Just want to thank the board for the opportunity. I've officially been here for greater than one week, so that's an accomplishment. A big thank you to Bill Wolf and Mike Henry for extending so much of their time to assist me with understanding the county's needs and operations. I have met with just about the entire group. I've got a couple of more meetings early next week. To all of you, thank you for taking the time to meet with me. And then just a real quick note from our Parks Director, Brian Bailey. You all will be receiving lots more information about it, but Brian sent a note out just saying that Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund has offered a quote unquote "good sign" about an opportunity to continue to showcase the partnership between Barien County and the DNR. He's been asked to present more information on the Phase Two of the Papa River County Park and Water Fleet. By no means is this a done deal, but Brian's excited that he's been invited to share more information on that grant application. And in August, middle of August, he'll be doing that. We'll be bringing back lots of information to the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, that completes my comments.
Thank you. Any questions for the Administrator? All right, we're going to pause for general comments from the public, not limited to the resolutions on the agenda, but. Any, yes, ma'am. Mamie, did you have some?
I do have a question. Mamie Yarborough, I would like to know, are we going to meet on Thursday, July 30? It is the fifth Thursday. I asked that, and I'm going to tell you totally why. Commissioner Harrison and I are members of the Canexus Board, CEOB, and they need to have a board retreat on July 30. And I'd like to know, and he needs to know, so that we can say, yes, we can come to that retreat, or we have a county commission board meeting, which is the fifth Thursday. We normally do not meet.
What time is the Canexus meeting?
Nine to one, 9:00 AM to one.
Well, as of right now, we are not scheduled to meet on the 30th. Because at our organizational meeting in January, we adopted something that said we wouldn't meet on the fifth Thursday. So I think there's four of those each year. But the situation is somewhat dynamic right now. So for the time being, we are not meeting.
Okay.
But if the situation changes and we need to meet, we can discuss that as a group and decide what to do. And make sure that if we had to meet, we would have a quorum in the event you and Bob have to be elsewhere.
Thank you.
But right now, we're not meeting.
Commissioner Harrison, you agree?
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments from the public?
Yes, we have some public comments. We have about 18 people watching right now. Tony Vanhart from Sodas Township. There was a large, a very large meeting of some form in the park at Three Oaks yesterday evening, and there were very few masks if on being worn and no distancing at all. I would estimate at least 200 people. Cheryl Marie from the Nonmunicipal Dubachlo Township. Yesterday, I sent an email to all commissioners and Clerk Tyler at 12:22 PM pertaining to a video by a physician which provides COVID virus early mitigation and cure studies showing that hydroxychloride works. My email was not mentioned today, and I was made known that my input applies to all people. The video should be investigated. Tony Vanhart from Sodas Township has added, as of yesterday afternoon, there is very little road construction being done on Napier West of Colfax. I ask one more time. There is a delay there. I can see the delay, and it's really bad to them. It's worse than, I bet you noticed it on the screen as well. Okay, I don't see any other comments.
All right, if anything pops up, just let us know.
Thank you, Matt.
Other business?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Scott here. This is kind of a question mark. At our last finance meeting, and I don't know exactly when that is, right in front of me, it was discussed that we, as a finance committee, need to get together to look at the language of the road department's motion that we make. And I'm wondering if this can be taken care of, because we do need to take care of that little bit of housekeeping and have the county administrator involved in that also in looking at the rewording of that motion. Madam Chair of Finance, do you remember us talking about that?
I definitely do. And I would like to ask that we wait a couple of weeks, because I do think that we need to meet with our administrator. And I think he is a bit aware of that, because he's heard us discuss it quite a bit. And when Jason Latham is available, and I ask for, for me, if you just give me a couple of weeks until we can call that meeting and come together. I'd like for it to be after August.
Madam Chair of Finance, I happen to agree with you. I was merely making the statement so that we don't forget.
Okay.
Now, and that's all. Thank you.
Very important, and we'll work on that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I think Brian went to grab a memo that deals with that and ran upstairs. And my understanding is that it is on the radar.
Good.
But he just, he just came back in the room.
Okay. He didn't hear what we said, what we asked.
Yeah, he is aware of what you said, Mamie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Standby.
So, Mr. Chair, we do have some motion language that could be. So these would be the two motions.
Has this been circulated to the finance?
Not yet. We were putting it all together with all the people to make sure that it was all ready to go, and then we were.
All right. Well, maybe a good target date would be the 23rd. And can address that. I understand it's been a matter of some concern for a while. And if the finance committee can plan to meet at 9:30 on the morning of the 23rd, I think that would be a good time to address it, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
If Latham, we need to talk very much with Jason. And it could easily be that, that we would meet at 9:30. That's two weeks away.
Right. I think that you can safely consider that done. He'll be there.
Okay. And Administrator Desette.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I'll have to leave you there.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I would, it's a question, I don't belong to the committee, but I would like to attend that meeting. Would that be okay with the rest of the commissioners?
Yes, it does not give us a majority. It would be fine.
I just want to kind of, maybe have a comment or something, I don't know.
You want to Zoom in, or do you want to be here in the board?
However they do, I want to be able to Zoom in. I guess we're going to have a Zoom meeting.
I mean to Zoom in. I don't mean to come there.
Right. Okay, well, we'll figure out all the technical aspects of this in the next 13 days or so.
Okay. It's okay. Just say that it will be a finance committee on July 23 at 9:30 AM.
Yes. Is that okay with everybody on the finance committee?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other other business? Announcements, reminders? Yeah, we'll be Zooming next week.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention to the full board, I did send everyone an email. The Barien County Planning Commission is working on updating our master plan. And I sent some worksheets for feedback on those objectives that are priority in Barien County for you to review. And if you could give me any of your input, so I can take that back to the Planning Commission on Tuesday, I would greatly appreciate it.
Very good. When do you need it?
If you could do it by Monday evening, I can kind of gather everyone's thoughts together and have it ready by Tuesday. It'd be no problem.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, does the, does the master plan that the commission put together, is that approved by us? The board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I'd just like to thank Annette for all her hard work to get us actually to have this meeting today.
Well, we're going to have someone from IS here Thursday morning prior to the start of the meeting, just in case we need them.
You know, I'd also.
With that, if there's no other business, we are adjourned at 12:25 PM till next Thursday morning at 10:30 AM.